Was your a gavel?
You've been de-gavel.
De-gavel.
That was a funny sensation, Bob.
Take off your shoe.
Do the Nikita Khrushchev. Oh, that's a heavy duty one.
Get the big mallet. Pro K, anyone?
U.S. Congress, anyone? No, thank you. All right, folks, we've got a green light. That means we can start. So, welcome to all of you to the city council meeting on Tuesday, March 6, 2018, the beginning of the month that changes the most in a single year, I think, where the average temperature goes from about 20 to about 50 by the end of the month, in 30 days. So, anyway, roll call, please, Ms. Mangan.
Member Brindle, here. Member Fisher.
Here.
Member Staunton.
Here.
Member Stewart.
Here.
Mayor Havlin.
Here. We have in front of us, well, wait a minute, I wanted to do a couple of things here. We've got some ninth graders here from Edina High School. First class of ninth graders at the high school. You all want to stand up? And I don't know if we can get the guys in the back room to to kind of pan over everybody so you can use this tape to verify your presence.
They need to pan to the left or those three people won't get credit.
There they go.
Yeah.
All right.
Good. And I take it there's some parents along with them, and thank you for coming as well. Glad to have you here. And then we've also got Dan Conboy from our police department with us this evening, too. So, Dan?
Thank you.
All right, we've got a form of meeting agenda in front of us. Is there anyone on the council who wishes to modify the agenda or manage your Neil?
No, sir.
All right. All will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as shown.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion, second, to adopt the meeting agenda as shown. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Community comment, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council on a matter of concern to them? And they'll have three minutes.
My name is Margaret Joss. My address is 6409 Biscayne Boulevard. Honorable Mayor, council members, and Manager Neil, thank you for the opportunity to present. My husband, Bill, and I have been in contact with the city regarding water pooling at the bottom of Deville Drive in Biscayne Boulevard since June of 2014. I last spoke to you on October 3 about the overwhelming amount of stormwater we experienced. The day after the council meeting, the city came out and put a camera attached to a robot down Catch Basin Number 6, and it traveled down the 208-foot stormwater exit pipe. The results from the robot and the camera were: The line was full of water at 68 feet from the road. The line remained full of water. It remained at 140 feet, and we had not received rain for two previous days. The line is broken at 154 feet and 203 feet. The endpoint could not be located as it is in a pond that has formed over years of debris being washed down. Additionally, the pond is located on private property. A week later, on October 10, Brian Olson, Edina's Public Works Director, and David Gorgon, the Utility Coordinator, came out to our neighborhood to meet with residents over about all our stormwater issues. The outcome of our meeting is that the city has proposed more catch basins in our immediate area. I feel that this is a Band-Aid approach and is not solving our stormwater issues. The solution to solving the stormwater situation is threefold. First, we need a larger exit pipe with sufficient draining to support the stormwater. The underground infrastructure supporting the current catch basins is connecting a 12-inch and a 15-inch pipe totaling 27 inches of stormwater plus water flowing into Catch Basin Number 6. All this water is to drain out of an exit pipe that is 18 inches in diameter. Evidently, 27 inches of stormwater is to drain efficiently through and out an 18-inch pipe. At our neighborhood meeting, Brian Olson and Dave Gorgon stated that the pond where the endpoint of the exit point is located would be drained this winter when the wetland is frozen. Once drained, the city would locate the endpoint, determine the elevation of the exit point, and compare it to the entrance point. At this time, the project has not been started. The second solution to the stormwater needs is a clear path to the wetland area. The endpoint cannot be underwater in a pond, nor it can be sitting 2/3 full of water. The third solution is that we need other streets and pond in our area to take in some of their own stormwater. Note the absence of catch basins in the upper part of this area. Catch basins need to be installed in streets that have higher elevations than Biscayne Boulevard. Currently, we are taking stormwater from over four blocks away. Note that the elevation drop from the top of Camelback, Deville Continental, to Biscayne Boulevard is 45 feet. Add the elevation drop of the water flowing from Knoll Drive in the upper part of Schaefer Road, and you can understand the velocity of which the water converges onto Biscayne Boulevard. The amount of water projected has risen 25 percent. How is Biscayne Boulevard going to handle the increased amount of rain when it cannot even handle a couple inches of rain? We need your help and action.
Thanks, Ms. Joss. Do you have your statement in a written form that you could submit to the clerk?
Mm-hmm.
Maybe your drawings as well?
Yep.
Or would you want to hang on to those?
Nope.
If those are your originals?
Nope.
If you can recreate them, we'll take them and see if we can find out what city staff is thinking about. Understand your idea on the solution, and there's some interesting ones involved there, and we'll stay on top of this.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Joss. Anyone else for community comment?
My name is Frank Lorenz. I live at 7151 York Avenue South, Unit 720, Edina, Minnesota 55435. A friend of mine who likes to irritate me sent me an excerpt from the Edina City website that showed several weeks of what's called the Claims Register in governmental accounting. In business, that would be called the Accounts Payable Journal, or the Check Register, or both. But in any event, it was page-turning excitement to go through it and see that the city was dispensing about $2.8 million that week. I believe the city's annual budget is over $100 million a year now, and it was interesting to see how much Metropolitan Council charges Edina for handling its sewage, its hundreds of thousands of dollars a quarter, maybe a month, I can't remember. But they're the one and only vendor, so you have no choice, you have no control over it. Similarly, you pay hundreds of thousands of dollars to the Minnesota League of Cities for liability insurance, and they are the one and only vendor, and they charge whatever the market will bear, or what their experience shows. So, there are huge amounts of money flowing out to various other government entities about which you have no control. But there was one item that caught my eye. It was $454.19, which was listed as the cost of a mattress for the captain's office. And the coding in that document didn't say whether it was the police department or the fire department. The fire department people normally spend three or four days living in the fire stations. The police normally work 12-hour shifts. So, I can understand the mattress cost for the fire captain, but if it was the police captain's office, I wonder. The vendor is something called Nectar Sleep, which I've never heard of. But in any event, beyond that, I'd like to ask for a little more transparency in your accounting. It would be helpful in the annual reports that you produce if you could list the total travel expenses of the various council members and the top two or three city staff employees, because the way this works, and it isn't just Edina, it's every other city that uses governmental accounting standards, conceivably, a trip could be spread over two or three different months using the P card or the credit card, an advance payment for a registration fee. Perhaps the person attending uses their own credit card for hotels or meals. It's absolutely impossible to look at your documents that you publish. It's all in there, but you can't see what's really happening. So, perhaps, in the interest of transparency for people who pay property taxes, you could summarize the travel expenses for the top five or six. Well, there's five people on the council and perhaps four of the top staff people to show us what's happening.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lorenz. Anyone else for community comment? Yes, sir. Good evening.
Hi, my name's David Frankel. I'm Edina resident. I'd rather not give my address. Since we have a lot of students here, I'll give a little historical background. If you read the newspaper, you'll notice this week is the first time a U.S. aircraft carrier has visited Vietnam since the end of the Vietnam War in 1975. Last year, President Trump signed what's called the Vietnam War Veterans Recognition Act of 2017. That marks March 29 as National Vietnam Veterans Day. What I'd like to ask the city to do is to have some kind of commemoration at the Edina Veterans Park for that Vietnam Veterans Day. If the city chooses not to do anything, I've talked to a number of people, including myself, who'll donate a wreath to put on the, at the Veterans Memorial Park in Edina. The other issue I'd like to discuss, as you all know, this fall is the election, which is cluttered with all kinds of local, state, and national offices up for reelection. There seems to be a lot of devices in this in Edina. A lot of this is over, a lot of construction issues, a lot of commercial construction. And what I'm going to ask, and I look at the council here, and I know the city departments, we do not have a very diverse community in our leadership, both in City Hall and the council. What I'm going to ask is if the incumbents running for reelection this fall, if there are any, please don't run and allow some people, maybe with people of color, to allow them to run for a city council seat. As I look before me, we only have one woman who's in a position of leadership in this room. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Frankel. Anyone else? All right, seeing no one coming forward, I'll close this particular part of the agenda. I think we should go back. Manager Neil, with respect to Margaret Joss, you'll talk to Mr. Olson, and I think the council is particularly keen about solving this water issue over on the Biscayne Boulevard neighborhood.
Yes, and they've been having some dialogue back and forth already this year, but we will talk about that and talk about schedules. I did note that she noted that the kind of work we're talking about does need to occur when things thaw, and we were expecting that thaw here anytime.
Okay, so I think one of the things that would be important for Ms. Joss is she's expected that, based on, I think, the October 10 visit, that certain things were going to happen during the wintertime, but it didn't happen. And so, an explanation on that would be important, too, I think, for us relative to those promises that were made and in which direction we're heading. And I thought some of those comments about trying to get 27 inches of stormwater through a broken 18-inch pipe were pretty interesting and concerning as well. So, okay. And then, Mr. Lorenz, with respect to his assertions about the one and only vendor, I think particularly with League of Minnesota Cities, we don't consider them to be our one and only vendor. They are selected a vendor, but we do a request for proposal, I think, on all of our insurance coverages.
We are members of LMCIT right now, so we aren't bidding that insurance package out every year.
All right, but do we compare those rates to other?
Not likely, not likely anymore.
We did in the past. Yeah, we did. Many, many years, we did that. It might not hurt to check that again.
We made a significant change when we switched to the LMCIT a couple of years ago.
And then, he said the sewer charges were interesting. Again, he recognized that we have only one vendor on that, and that's the Met Council, and the charges they levy against our community for managing stormwater and sewer.
That is by design. One vendor, by design.
Right, and then the cost of that is spread amongst our residents and our new construction people with what you might call sack-and-wack charges. He might explain quickly what those are.
Right. Sewer access charges and water access charges are assessed by the Metropolitan Council and also by the city as a way to touch new users, or to get new users of our system to contribute to the capital contributions that created that system that they are connecting onto. That is the biggest form of, that's the biggest source of capital expense dollars to our underground, to our water and sewer utility system.
And then, there was the question about the mattress for the captain's office?
Yep, that's for our fire department.
Okay. Yeah, I would assume so, and I think he did, too, assumed that it was. I just want an affirmation that it was for the
Yes, it is.
Fire chief.
No sleeping in the police department.
Fire captain, yep. All right, would like to see more transparency in accounting on travel expenses. How would someone go about seeing what's being spent on travel expenses?
So, our accounts payable that you see is connected to state, a state system that provides us with titles for different accounts, because they're trying to provide some uniformity from city to city. So, that's why we use the titles and the definitions that we use. We are, we do have the ability to segregate individual people and their travel expenses. We do it through travel reporting. Each time you take a trip, there is an aggregation of each individual cost, so we can provide that information upon request.
All right, okay. And then, Mr. Frankel, is he still here, Mr. Frankel? I think he left. The Vietnam Veterans Day recognition that he thinks should take place, I thought that was a great idea. All get in contact with our veterans.
Yeah, they'd be the best group, I think, to organize that.
Yeah, I'll email Bob Benson tomorrow and have him check on that. I wouldn't, I'd be surprised if they weren't already working on this, frankly. And then, the other comment was political in nature, and I don't think really appropriate for, yep.
Mr. Mayor, if we need a proclamation of some kind, could we have that prepared for the next city council meeting?
Sure, we could. We have a meeting between now and then, and we can have that ready. For the Vietnam Memorial or the Veterans Day?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
The date is March 29 on that.
Okay, thanks, Member Brindle.
Mr. Mayor, if I can just supplement on the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust. That is a member organization, so it's a co-op of sorts where we are, and correct me if I'm wrong, Manager Neil, but where we are members and there is a board of directors. I actually sit on the board of directors, and it's elected every year. There are new appointees, and there is a board of directors to the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust as well. And sometimes, the members receive rebates at the end of the year based on the performance of the trust.
Right, and if memory serves, when we joined the co-op, we experienced a significant improvement in our costs.
Right, I assume that's true.
Very, very much. But I just was answering the question, to be clear, about whether our insurance package is something we bid out every year. It is not. It is not.
Okay. Well, for years, I know we did, and many times, the league was lowest.
That's right.
And over time, we became comfortable with that notion. Thanks, Member Staunton, for that. Let's move on to the next portion of the agenda, unless anyone else has anything they want to cover from community comment. Adoption of the consent agenda. We've got 10 items on the consent agenda. Is there anyone on the council that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? Otherwise, we'll entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. We've got a motion, second, to adopt the consent agenda as shown. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. And then, we do not have any public hearings tonight. We have no presentations this evening, which is really unusual. I don't know how you, you know, you might have been here till 2:00 in the morning, but you hit a home run tonight. This might be the shortest meeting we have all year.
They're supposed to stay for at least an hour. They might not make it.
Yeah. You'll have to come up and ask questions afterwards, maybe if we don't make it. Reports and recommendations portion of the agenda, and we've got a resolution in that portion of the agenda, a singular item in that portion of the agenda, Resolution 2018-20. I'm going to get it up here online. And is there a motion to adopt that resolution?
So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion, second, to adopt Resolution 2018-20, accepting donations on behalf of the city of Edina. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. So, for those of you in the audience, when somebody wants to gift something to the city, state law requires that 4/5 of the council vote in favor of receiving that gift. And so, for this reporting period, which we cover this every first and third Tuesday, or sometimes every first and third Wednesday, depending on when we're meeting, we have to approve these donations or gifts to the city. And in this reporting period, we have some gifts to the police department from what's called the Edina Crime Fund, and Member Brindle and Member Staunton are going there also. Two of our council members are on the Edina Crime Fund. And in this reporting period, they gave a little over $8,000 for training equipment for the police department. They provided $8,500 for their purchase of a new canine that's going to be named Griff, which makes me think it's not a shepherd, maybe.
It is a shepherd.
It is a shepherd?
Mm-hmm.
And then, those dogs, of course, require support, and they have to live with one of the police officers, and so, the crime fund has provided for support to money going to the police department, a little over $10,600 for that support. And then, the Edina Parks Department received a donation from the Edina Baseball Association for $25,000 to do some work down at Courtney Field, and I'm thinking, maybe Member Fisher remembers what that work was for.
Lights?
Lights and netting.
All right, thank you.
And actually, I was, if I could, I'd like to ask, Mr. Neil, do we know when that work will, because that donation is to offset a grant we got from Hennepin County, was it?
Right, right. So, the plan is to implement the project as soon as the equipment can be acquired on-site and contractor is there. So, earlier in the season, the better. So, as soon as they can get in the ground, and as soon as the ground is thawed enough that they can drill a hole in the ground, and they've got the stuff there, they're going to put it up.
Good. And Member Fisher, you might comment on that grant from the county, too, if you remember. Was that $100,000?
Yep, from the sales tax association.
From the sales tax program associated with the Twins.
Right, so we're getting the money from the county, plus the money from the baseball association to do some really wonderful work at Courtney Fields. All right, that, Member Brindle?
Yes.
Can I just do a follow-up on Griff? Griff is a new canine pup that will come on to the, he's currently in training. He'll come on to the force. I think he begins work here in Edina with his handler, Officer Mike Bengston. He'll be here in April. And you might, if you follow Edina canines, you might recall that we do have a young canine named Ike, and he came up with epilepsy, so he cannot do his job as a police canine dog, as a police dog. And so, he is still here. He's held by his owner, who is Mike Bengston. And so, this new dog, Griff, comes in sooner than we would have brought in another canine pup. But he, like Ike, was born in the Netherlands, and so, we're looking forward to welcoming Griff to the force next month.
Good, great report. And know anything about Griff's color? We've had dogs that are multicolored. We've had blacks.
You know, we did see a picture of him, and I tend to think, I think he is multicolored. Do you recall, Kevin? I think he might be multicolored. I think we saw a photo.
Well, you'll soon have an opportunity to meet Griff somewhere.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would just want to add a, maybe it's an obvious point, but, you know, that's a lot of money coming from the Edina Crime Fund going toward really worthwhile causes with the police department, and I'm assuming that it's just not council members, our two council members donating the money into that fund, that it comes from our community making donations to the Edina Crime Fund that ultimately gets where it needs to get.
Yeah, it is from a special donation to the crime fund.
Yep.
Thank you for making that point. There are many, many people in our community that are supportive of the crime fund. And they'll also do things like offering rewards for the apprehension of suspects in a particular situation as well. And I'm sure Member Staunton and Member Brindle could talk at length about some of the things they're working on, but it's just a wonderful organization populated with just some great citizens in our community, including our former mayor, Denny Metzold, who is a wonderful person to have on that particular board. All right, we're going to move on now to correspondence petitions. Anything other than what's on the dais this evening, Manager Neil?
No, sir.
All right. Next matter is aviation noise update. Member Brindle, anything there?
Thank you. The next meeting of the Noise Oversight Committee will be this month, Wednesday, March 21, at 1:30 at MAC offices on 28th Avenue, near the airport. So, it'll, we meet every other month, and so, that is when we will have our meeting in March.
Good, thank you. And then, for those of you that are traveling to the League of Minnesota, National League of Cities meeting in Washington, DC, has there been a meeting set by the noise folks in DC?
Yes, yes, there is, Your Honor. It's on, and it's on the calendars of folks that are going, but I believe it's Monday afternoon.
Okay, good.
I may provide a little something to talk about for that.
Fantastic.
All right, great, thank you.
Very good. Mayor and council comments. Member Fisher?
I have nothing.
Member Staunton?
Nothing for me, thanks.
Member Brindle?
All right, I agree, as usual. I can't pass it up. But welcome back to Member Staunton, who just came back from a trip to Japan for the purposes, wife is running marathons around the world, and she ran the Tokyo Marathon. And welcome back to Member Stewart, who was in France, visiting one of his children who is having a semester abroad in France. So, those two things. And then, on Friday morning, the mayor and I attended the Connecting with Kids Leadership Breakfast, held at the Edina Country Club, and attended by lots of people. It's heartwarming to see all of the adults who provide mentorship and, as coaches, mentors, and teachers to Edina's younger generation. So, we are in good hands when these two generations, and spans probably more than two generations, all work together for bringing young people forward. And then, our first taproom in Edina, Wooden Hill, is open. They actually opened at 4 o'clock on February 28. So, they are open, very happy to be here, and so, it's exciting to move into a new kind of business in Edina. So, we're excited.
That was for the dads in the audience.
Yeah, yeah, dads in the audience. 7421 Bush Lake Road, and they have teas, they have things to eat, they have brewed teas, as well as their other brewed beverages. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Stewart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Because I missed last meeting, I'll just mention tonight, on February 11, the mayor and I attended the Chinese New Year celebration that was held at Valley View Middle School. Every year, and I've been for the last four years, the Chinese community does just a fantastic job of welcoming in the New Year. And I know there was a second celebration that the mayor attended a week later. But it is the Year of the Dog, and we wish a Happy New Year to all. On this past Wednesday, February 28, four of us attended the State of the Community event, and the mayor and the school superintendent reported on the state of our community, both from the perspective of the schools and of the city. And it's really encouraging to see everything going well for us as a city. Let's hope we can keep it on a good track. But, Mr. Mayor, I did an excellent job on that, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
On Thursday, the 1st, the mayor and I attended a session at the Normandale Auditorium called What Public Art Can Do for called What Public Art Can Do for a Community. Uh, we got to hear some really interesting perspectives on, uh, blending art into our community and into, uh, various projects as we develop our community further. And had some great examples of how art does enhance a community. So, uh, really enjoyed that. Um, also, uh, the mayor and I attended on Friday the 2nd, a basketball game. The Edina Hornets defeated the Wayzata Trojans at the buzzer, uh, 60 to 59 with the last second shot. And, um, just a really fun, fun game to watch. Uh, the boys' basketball sectionals, I believe, begin tomorrow. Uh, the girls' basketball sectionals should be beginning soon, and I don't know when. Anybody? Uh, they're over. Uh, okay. And the boys' high school hockey tournament begins Thursday. Uh, so a lot going on there. And then, uh, Member Fisher, Member Staunton and I will be attending the National League of Cities, uh, this coming Monday and Tuesday, actually Sunday, Monday and Tuesday. And then, um, I've got a, uh, Metro Cities Board of Directors meeting coming up on Thursday the 15th. And also, uh, we're aware that there will be some open houses for the new construction at all the various schools here in Edina, uh, both on the 10th and the 17th. Uh, so I encourage, those are Saturdays. I encourage anybody who's interested in seeing the development done by the school district, um, to look at their website. There are different open houses at different schools on Saturday the 10th and Saturday the 17th. Thank you.
Good. Uh, with respect to the, uh, open house on the 17th, we'll do Walk with the Mayor in conjunction with the open house at the high school. So 9:00 on the 17th, uh, you can, uh, pull double duty there. You can do Walk with the Mayor and talk to the mayor while we all walk around the school and see what all the improvements are that have been made at the high school. So I hope some of you think about coming. Some of the dads, some of the students that are already there, you're welcome to attend. Would love to have you walk around with me. Uh, back on the 22nd of February, um, in the morning, I met with some French students here, uh, 3rd to 5th graders from, uh, a town called Paysac, France. It's in the Bordeaux region of France. They're, um, uh, they were just wonderful young people with, uh, great teachers with them. Uh, my wife, who was a retired French teacher, came over as well to greet them and visit with their teachers. And we wish them the best. Uh, the mayor of Paysac sent, uh, a little, a couple little things. One was a little notepad with the city of Paysac on it, you know, like you'd give out for a, a day planner type of thing. And I thought, yeah, something like, some things like that would be good for us to have. We're more limited and, uh, we have, so we had some pins we were able to give the kids and a deck of cards. Uh, but I didn't have anything I could send back to the mayor, so I'm going to have to figure that out. Um, and as Member Stewart noted, there were two Chinese New Year's celebrations in Edina this year. One was the broader one that, that we both attended. And then on the, uh, Saturday night, the 24th of February, uh, the Edina, what they call the Edina Chinese Association, which has their own, uh, facility over off West 78, uh, near Scripps, uh, had their, uh, annual New Year's celebration. And there were probably 320 people there, all, all residents of Edina. And it was a terrific event. Uh, some of the adult, uh, uh, women got up and sang a song to an old Chinese melody that was called "Edina, My Beautiful Edina, My Beautiful Home." Uh, something to that effect. Uh, anyway, that was the, the rough translation I got from somebody as to what they were singing about. And I thought, well, that's really wonderful to have people that are moving in here embrace our community in such a terrific way. And, um, and that was the same night the girls won the state hockey tournament. So, uh, I wrote to Sammy Reber and I suggested that they come over to City Hall for some meeting. We can recognize them and all get our picture taken with them. And so we're trying to coordinate that. I think Manager Neil has her email address, and we'll try to, try to get them over there. And we'll knock on wood here and find some wood here, uh, that the boys have the same sort of outcome. And that on Saturday night, they're playing for the state championship and win as well. Um, on the 27th, I was a participant in Edina Reads. There were half a dozen people that, uh, participated with the, uh, library over at Grandview and, uh, Edina Community Foundation. Uh, we were responsible for talking to the folks that attended about some of the books that we've read lately. For me, it was, uh, they wanted everybody to read at least two books. Uh, I did, uh, read a book about Washington's Farewell Address and its applicability to our, our modern day situations. And there were some uncanny parallels there about what he was worried about, uh, as he closed out his first presidency of the United States. Some of those issues still pervade us, uh, divisive Congress, inadequate funding, be careful about foreign entanglements, and, uh, make sure you ensure prosperity and, and good trade relations with, with, uh, peoples here and peoples abroad. So, uh, that's just a little bit of a snapshot of what was in that book, but I would encourage my fellow colleagues and anybody else out there to read that book, Washington's Farewell Address. Uh, the other book I read was called The New Localism, written by a couple of Brookings scholars. Uh, one was on the Philadelphia Fed. The other guy's a longstanding scholar with Brookings named Bruce Katz. And it was, this was, for those of us that have been involved in local government, it seemed like these guys that are scholars at Brookings just had this epiphany that local government is where things are happening? You know, where have you been? Uh, that we're the grassroots of democracy, we're the front line of democracy? And, and, uh, and there are a lot of things that can happen here that, uh, we don't have to worry about happening at a federal level or a, or a state level. But as you all know, some of these issues are getting pushed down to us as well, because things aren't happening at a national or a state level. Uh, like some cities being asked, larger cities being asked to deal with things like minimum wage or employee benefits, things that wouldn't be normally in our purview. So, um, that's an interesting read as well. I'm going to pass that book around to my colleagues to have them take a look at it as well. Uh, Manager, let's see, I wait, the 20, State of the Community on the 28th, that was, as, uh, Member Stewart noted, uh, we had good participation there with the Rotary Clubs and the Chamber and some other of our residents that came. I think there were 125, 130 people in attendance. Um, and then on the 1st, uh, in addition to the, uh, evening event that Member Stewart and I attended, I had lunch with, um, a couple of people from the, uh, Minnehaw Creek Watershed District and, um, James Whisker and Dick Miller. And one of the things they talked about was as this Meadowbrook Golf Course project gets revisited, they're talking to Minneapolis Park Board about the Watershed District taking over that project for them, which would allow them to do some, raise, uh, you know, address some of the storage issues that we've talked about, water storage issues. And also the possibility then that we could work with, uh, Three Rivers Park District on putting a trail system through from Hopkins, through, through that marsh behind Todd Park and bring it into Todd Park, across the road, and then up by the railroad tracks and bring it up to, um, up to Grandview. So stay tuned on that, too. If, uh, everything goes well, we might have another trail assessment to go through. Um, that same morning, as connecting with kids, there was a, a wellness program, uh, put on by the Chamber. I thought I'd see Manager Neil there. I ran over there from the Connecting with Kids meeting because the Chamber was announcing that they were going to be part of a pilot project that's been run in, in, uh, England. And it, it involves, jokingly, they have a YouTube segment on it. They call it an old folks' home. Now, people my age would know what an old folks' home is. You guys probably wouldn't. But, uh, it's four and five-year-olds interacting with people that are in, um, senior living circumstances. And this was in England, and, and they did all kinds of great things together. And it really, I think, enhanced the lives of the kids and really enhanced the lives of, of folks that were sort of at the last, that last stage of life, uh, where they had interaction now with four or five-year-olds where they hadn't had that, uh, on a regular basis. So, uh, we'll see how that pilot program goes in Edina. Uh, and then also that morning, I attended the Blake Road Quarter Subcommittee Meeting. Um, there's some station planning going on for not only the Blake Road Station for Southwest LRT, but, uh, Minnehaw Creek Watershed District owns the old, what they call the cold storage building over there. I think it's about 20 acres. And they did an RFQ on that, I think, and they got five great responders, K.A., George Sherman, Doran, and, um, two others that I thought that were really strong. And so they're proceeding to the next stage on that. And because the Watershed District is basically deploying all of our money from communities along the watershed line, along the creek line, uh, they're really interested in our opinions on what's going to happen here, too. So stay tuned on that. And then Member Brindle and I attended on Saturday, the 70th and Cahill Small Area Plan, uh, group and, and watched some of the interaction there. Seems like they're making good progress. Um, and then yesterday, I had, uh, two telephone conferences instead of traveling, and that was, uh, Regional Council Mayor's had an executive committee meeting, conference call, and then Greater MSP were working on what folks on the council know as the, um, dashboard, which is the way we measure, uh, our region and its successes against comparable regions around the country, whether it be Seattle, Portland, San Francisco, Pittsburgh, uh, Chicago, Boston. Uh, we're looking at all these, uh, all these, uh, elements of the dashboard to see if we're still, uh, we've still got the right measures in place and also whether we've got the right comparative cities in place. In fact, we're thinking about replacing Phoenix with Charlotte, North Carolina. And we can talk about that later as well. And then on a going-forward basis, um, oh, Member Fisher, before I, the, the basketball game on the 2nd, uh, the seniors were recognized. And would you tell us who the seniors were that were recognized? Can you remember, other than your son? Tell us-
Sure. Um, so it's Chris Rolfe, Anders Nelson, Luke Nelson, uh, or Anders Nelson, Luke Glenna, and Dominic Ingram, and then Charlie Fisher.
Charlie Fisher. Yeah, there's some terrific young guys in there and some great basketball players. So, and Anders Nelson made the buzzer beater shot. Um, so that was fun to see. Uh, and then on the going-forward basis, I just got this in the mail today. Minnesota State University Mankato has a facility in Edina that many of us know about. You guys may not have known that, down at 7700 France. And, uh, they're now, uh, opening a graduate and professional education center on the 5th floor of 7700 France. And, uh, I think our whole community is invited to an open house on March 29th from 4:00 to 7:00. At least I'm inviting the whole community. I'm taking that license, too, because I think it's important for people to see this that are interested. And they're going to have, they're, they will have the president of the university there, a guy named Richard Davenport, for a brief program celebrating the opening of the facility beginning about 5:30, Thursday, March 29, 4:00 to 7:00, 7700 France Avenue. What did I say? 5th floor? 4th floor?
Fifth.
Yeah, 5th floor. Okay. Uh, Manager Neil?
Thank you, Your Honor. I got a couple of quick things. Um, first, uh, we have our regular now, regular HRA meeting scheduled for Thursday morning, March 15th. That's your next meeting. And that, uh, meeting agenda is chock full of, um, interesting, important things for you. So that'll be a big meeting that day. We'll keep it sandwiched within the 90 minutes allowed. Uh, we are rescheduling the volunteer, community volunteer event that was, that was canceled last night into April, and I will get, be able to get back with you, I think, tomorrow about what date that will be rescheduled to in April. Uh, Mr. Mayor, you rec, you, uh, mentioned the Minnehaw Creek Watershed District, and, uh, it's important to recognize their new leader, James Whisker, has been advanced to the, uh, I think the executive director role of, of that group now. And we've got a, we've got a long and, and a pretty productive relationship with James over the years. So we're, we're happy to see that, uh, we're happy to see him move up there. Uh, finally, or t, one, two things. Uh, snowplow drivers, uh, they've had about enough of snow this year, too. Um, they're, they're running out of places to put it. So you can see some of our streets are beginning to, to crimp a little bit and get a little more narrower, and, uh, the piles near driveways are starting to get taller. Um, they are not the cause of the snow. I would, I just want everybody to know that, but they are doing their best. They're working a lot of hours. Um, and, uh, we're, we're hoping that, uh, maybe this one was maybe our last big one for the year. Finally, uh, regarding tonight's agenda, uh, one of the things we do as staff, particularly when it comes to public hearings, sketch plan reviews, et cetera, uh, the things that, the kind of the big chunky things that cause, uh, large time spans in your agenda, we do try to modulate those a little bit. So we do, we try to make sure they're not all queued up for one night. So you know that because you had an easy night tonight, you, we're, we're paying for this later. And, uh, uh, most likely that starts March 20th.